It's the October Campbell County Public School Board Meeting. We're going to first open with the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence. Everybody rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, we always have fun when we get a presentation by the Campbell County Educational Foundation. And so, who's presenting tonight?
Rose Epperson.
Rose Epperson, thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chair, Superintendent, and members of the Campbell County School Board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Rose Epperson, and I represent the Campbell County Educational Foundation. We're a group of volunteers that have been working to provide financial assistance to our students to help them with their post-secondary pursuits. The Campbell County Educational Foundation Board includes Susan Brandt, Dean Farmer, Linda Grubba, Vicki Maddox, Elizabeth Nairhood, Brandon Tredway, Sam Vance, Clay Stanley, and Mary Millie. The foundation was formed just a little over five years ago, and I'm still in awe at what has been accomplished in that short period. We anticipate the financial backing we are helping to provide to students will have a major impact on the career and college readiness of Campbell County students, their lifelong success, and the economic future of the Campbell County region. Tonight, I have the honor of presenting another gift to promote and support the dual enrollment program, the Future Center of Alta Vista, and now also the career readiness programs at all the Campbell County high schools. Although still a relatively new organization, we're excited about the momentum and support we have received from the community. Tonight's donation of $22,500, combined with support for the Alta Vista Future Center, brings the total of gifts from the Campbell County Educational Foundation to over $100,000. At this time, I'd like to ask Dr. Stanley to further explain the use of this funding by the school system. Thank you.
Thank you, Rose. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, one, I'd like to congratulate the members of our foundation. They do extremely good work, and they do it just for the good and betterment of our kids. I mean, years ago, Campbell County schools, under Dr. Johnson, made a great decision to invest in the CTE Dual Enrollment Program with CVCC because he saw this was an avenue that kids needed to have opened up to them. They needed to have more pathways to a career. And you also see what the job force needs in Campbell County and in the surrounding areas. So right now, we've got 65 students who have participated in the CTE program, you know, from health sciences to welding to HVAC to EMT. I don't know if I've named them all, but it's been a very popular program. And the money that we receive from the foundation goes to help offset the cost for tuition to CVCC, for any textbooks or any materials they might need for the program. And recently, we've started using some of the funds to help support the college and career preparation and exploration of the Future Centers in Alta Vista. We've got guidance counselors in each one of our buildings who do this work, and certainly we've let them know that the foundation is here to support them in any way that they need. But we're really kind of branching out a little bit from the CTE programs to get into each school and each region of the county to support this good work. So again, I'd like to thank the foundation for what they do, and they deserve another round of applause. Thank you.
Yeah. 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 We can gather in right behind you. Come on up. Everybody from the foundation, please.
Y'all come on.
Come on.
Come on, Susan.
Yeah, y'all. She said, "Come on."
What are we doing?
Getting a picture.
Yeah, I know, but where are we standing?
We'll stand right here, gather in. Do we have somebody take the picture?
I'm gonna have to.
You're good.
He's got it.
Smile.
Great looking bunch.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Rose. Thank you, yes. And besides thanking the foundation members, we need to thank the donors to the foundation. We don't really have a list of those, but please extend our, you know, our sincere appreciation to the donors. I think that's, you know, goes without saying that it couldn't be done without them, too. So, great. This is good news. Thank you so much. All right, our next presentation, again, Dr. Stanley, instructional update and Constitution Day presentation.
Yeah, I'd like to just kind of give you an update on September 17th. That's Constitution Day. I think we recognized it in Campbell County this year on the 16th. And Elizabeth Knowles, who was our content specialist in social studies and history, and Amy Abel, put together a presentation for you tonight to kind of see what happened in some of our classrooms on Constitution Day. So Tracy.
Today is Madigan Constitution Day. On this day, we celebrate the adoption of the Constitution that was written over 230 years ago. Here's a written amendment, so we can spread and share information about the Constitution of the United States of America.
We, the people of the United States.
The United States.
And all the states.
From Portland, Maine, west to San Diego, California.
From far down north to Colorado, south to El Paso, Texas.
Don't forget Los Angeles, Hawaii.
We, the people of the United States, were born on a perfect union.
The U.S. Constitution, and our government, actually, from 1777.
That's all today, we, the people.
Thank you, and have a great Leesville Road Day.
So you can see, we had a lot of great activities on Constitution Day, as we do every day. If you've got any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. And I'd like to congratulate Ms. Knowles and thank Amy Abel for their help in putting this together.
Yeah, thank Elizabeth for that. And thank you for the schools for, you know, taking us seriously, and it's our patriotic duty to remember Constitution Day. So I appreciate that on behalf of the board.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yeah. That's great. Okay, we have a few speakers. At this time, the board will hear matters from the floor. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak. Please be respectful of the three-minute time limit. Prior to speaking, please state your name and address. Comments must be directed to the board and not to staff, the audience, or the media. All right, Ms. Mendez, you're first.
Well, good evening. My name is Jacqueline Mendez. I'm a member of Moms for Liberty and a resident of Evington, Virginia. At the last meeting, attention was brought to Castle, who sells programs nationally available in all 50 states. SEL claims to teach children skills that are traditionally accepted and valued, such as empathy, and empathy regulating emotions and building relationships. However, the definitions of these words are subjective, and SEL takes full advantage of many parents' blind trust in the education system. Schools measure SEL success by collecting data on each student. That creates a psychological profile, which is attached to their student identification number. This data is stored and monitored in dashboards that allows administrators and staff to track the progress by district, by school, by grade, by class, by gender, and race, down to the individual. The data is entered into the statewide longitudinal data systems, SLDS, and follows a student as they change grades or even schools. Castle, the organization responsible for creating SEL, claims that skills they support are necessary to be employable in the workforce. And so, the SEL data collection is creating a psychological profile of students to determine what areas they are good for. So I have a couple of questions for you, board members. Does the Campbell County opt-out options for families objecting to massive data collection? How is the curriculum selected? It should, I'm sorry, it should. Moms for Liberty supports options for parents to opt out of data collection. Are you aware of the controversy around SEL and its affiliates? And have you looked at longitudinal studies to see what progress you've made? And what input did you consider from the parents and the community? And are you measuring effectiveness and outcomes? And how are you doing this? So I want to close with Dr. Johnson's explanation of SEL, which I was not here, but I was able to view online. So a targeted approach to teaching kids empathy, truthfulness, golden rules, respect, social awareness, these are virtues taught by families. My point is, we are stripping parents of their responsibilities to shape and mold their children, and children deserve better. Schools used to teach allegiance to the founding fathers, towards their parents, toward our elected officials, toward a belief in God, and toward the sovereignty of this nation as a separate entity. Parents need to review these teachings and consider homeschooling at this point, because it's really bad, and until public schools sort through this indoctrination curriculum. Thank you.
Excuse me. Good evening. I am Crystal Coleman from Alta Vista. Let's just cut to the chase. On April 7th, in an email I received from a board member, it was revealed that there had been a book challenge. On April 25th, I sent the lengthy list of books found in Campbell County school libraries that, to say the least, were of serious concern. Also, on April 25th, this county passed a resolution banning inherently divisive concepts. On May 3rd, I sent that same list of library concerns to each school board, excuse me, school board member. Since then, for almost six months, I have been talking about this. But really, how silly of me. You already knew at the very beginning of April that there were problems. Your resolution against divisive concepts clearly states that promoting one race, skin color, et cetera, as inherently superior to another is not accepted. And yet, Not My Idea, a book about whiteness, which uncovers the truth about white supremacy, and Devils Within, about a boy with a background in white supremacy, are still very much a part of our school libraries. And let's not forget Governor Youngkin's new policy reinforcing parents' fundamental right to direct the upbringing and education of their children. And yet, not only has this county not addressed the mess in our libraries, but there are seven more additions: violence, sex rings, vile profanity, exploitive sexuality. Need I say more? What is the matter with you? School boards across this state are working to address this, but we have to take it a step further. Why is this mess in our libraries to begin with? One Madison County board member said it best: "Even putting it up for question says we condone it." Is that how Campbell County should interpret your behavior, or rather, the lack thereof, that you approve this mess? There is so much good that happens in this county. Do you think that this mess is the right thing for our children? It's just disgusting. You need to do something about it, and not wait for another Governor Youngkin directive or policy. Thank you.
Haven't seen you in a while.
I've been quiet. I know you missed me. I'm going to just raise a couple proposals today. My name is Doug Behringer, Rosberg District, Rosberg Address. The two changes I'm going to propose to the current policy regarding public comment from the floor, a change to the three-minute time limit you currently impose on public comment, and a change to your requirement that citizens must request to speak before noon on Friday before your meeting the following Monday. As you must surely be aware, many of us on the citizen's side of the table agree that the three minutes is sometimes not enough time to communicate our positions on complicated issues. This is especially true if we wish to offer evidence to support our positions. We can appreciate that the board does not want to extend the duration of meetings longer than necessary, and we most certainly are not advocating for citizen filibusters. So I'm proposing a couple of options to accommodate our request for more time to speak without letting such speech get out of control. One option would be to allocate a block of time near the beginning of each meeting, say 30 minutes, and allow each speaker to utilize the time he or she needs to make the point until the allocated time has expired. Another option would be to allow for more extended speech from the floor at the beginning of one meeting every quarter. Make such an open forum the primary item on your agenda for those meetings, and give citizens the time they need to make their points. The Board of Supervisors does this. Finally, perhaps the best option would be to implement a policy that would allow a citizen to be placed on your meeting agenda. The citizen would need to make a formal request, perhaps through his or her district representative, and explain why he or she believes their issue warrants such consideration. This would enable you to weed out matters that can be covered in the currently allocated three minutes, but would also allocate time for weightier matters and supporting evidence to be presented. Now to the second matter, let me begin by stating, I cannot understand or see how your requirement that a citizen must request to address the board on the Friday before your meeting serves any real purpose. Rather, it stifles free speech about any concern that may arise over the weekend before the meeting. Does the board really need to know why a citizen is asking to address the board so far in advance? If the purpose is to allow you to filter out frivolous topics for more serious ones, couldn't you make and explain this determination during the meeting in presence of all in attendance? Do you need this advance notice in order to prepare a response before the citizen has even spoken? I don't believe either of these is your intent, but I can't come up with any justification for this advance notice. I would suggest instead that you place a sign-up sheet outside the door, so citizens who wish to address the board could make their request known prior to entering this room. This is how the Board of Supervisors handles such requests. At the very least, please consider moving the sign-up deadline to noon of the same day as the meeting, rather than before the weekend. And in closing, I ask that you put these proposals up for public consideration at your next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that was all our speakers. Thank you. All right. Approval of the minutes, September minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any questions or discussions on the minutes? Not all those in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Motion carries. Payment of the bills?
Mr. Chairman, I move we pay the bills and so far as funds allowed.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions about the bills? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Ms. McClanahan, acceptance of donations?
Tonight, you have 11 donations that were listed in advance of the meeting. Unless you have any questions, I ask that you approve them as presented.
Move for approval.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any questions? All in favor of accepting the donations, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Non-resident tuition?
Tonight, you have 13 applicants being considered for approval as non-resident tuition students. Unless you have any questions, I ask that you approve it.
I do have a question. I noticed one of these children is from Russell County. What's the circumstances?
We've already worked that out. I've already talked to him. You explain.
He's military.
Military.
Okay, all right. So I've been taken care of.
See, they commute every day from southwest Virginia to Leesville Road. I miss kids.
Motion, second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration of school activity fund audit.
Tonight, you have the annual school activity fund audit of all of the schools in the district. The report was very good, no unusual findings, same as, you know, findings that we've had in the prior year, and everything looked really good. So unless you have any questions, I ask that you approve it as presented.
Any questions? Motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ms. Hunley, personnel report.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you have the personnel report in front of you. I'm happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, I'd ask that you approve it as written.
Any questions?
No. If there are no questions, I move for approval.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Ms. Hunley. Dr. Johnson, would you like to share a report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have just a couple of things tonight. One, I wanted to take a second. Many of you went out to our open houses at the start of the school year, and I hope that you noticed the good job that our custodians have done in getting our schools ready and how nice they looked. And just wanted to recognize that on October 2nd, it was Custodians' Day, and so I wanted to just give a shout out to all of our custodians and the good work that they've done in our schools this year to get ready to open that up.
Absolutely. Congrats.
And then regarding the school activity reports, I would just say, one, we've got a lot of good bookkeepers in each of our schools that do a good job in managing those, but also Ms. McClanahan, working with them throughout the year, giving them guidance, a handbook and different things to help them stay up on all the changes that occur, and it has been considerable in the last few years, but they do a good job for us, and we appreciate the work that they do handling those funds.
Thank you.
And that's all I have.
All right. Board will present different topics. I think we'll start with Mr. Jones.
The meeting is done already. Well, the most important thing, I guess, tonight is thanking the Campbell County Education Association Foundation for that generous gift and the hard work that they do to go out and solicit the donations from the public, and certainly appreciate their efforts and appreciate the use that we can make out of that money. Certainly, again, the 11 donations from the public, you know, that Michelle listed, we approve, certainly appreciate them just as much as we possibly can. Dr. Stanley, you're getting good at presentations. You did two last month and one tonight. You're just going to be a regular PowerPoint presenter. On the Constitution Day, I went to Rosberg High School and visited a couple classes, and I was really, I was really impressed or amazed at the engagement of the students in discussing current events and so forth in a sensible fashion. I mean, nobody got mad, and it was really enjoyable. And just certainly appreciate, you know, the effort that the teachers and administrators gave, but it was really enjoyable. And then I had an opportunity, I didn't know what I was going to get into, but I got an opportunity to climb on a school bus and talk to the bus driver. I just sat down beside her and talked to her, and I was amazed at how far she drives every day. But I asked her, was, you know, was she overworked and underpaid? No, she was very, she just said, "I love my job." So, you know, what you may hear about bus drivers, shortages, and Dr. Renala, whatever you're doing, she was very happy. She said, "Just, you know, whatever you can, just, you know, do what you can to keep us happy." She was very, very happy, and we're getting a lot of use out of that bus driver. I mean, she was rolling. And I think that's all I got. That's enough.
Yes, also, thanks to the Education Foundation and the other donors, Terry Brown specifically, that I see at the football games, $1,000 to Brookville High School Football. It's awesome. I am announcing that Brookville High School is having open house tomorrow, and the chorus is actually performing at 3:30. And then it's open for teacher conferences from 4 to 6. Principal White, who's here tonight, invited me to also come into the high school for Constitution Day, so I got to hang out with a couple AP history classes and see their presentations, and the teachers asking them questions. I was really floored. You know, you look around a classroom and you expect to, you know which kid's the smart kid? I was blown away. I mean, everybody was raising their hand to answer the questions. Was very impressed. And I appreciate that. And Ms. Ewing, am I going to say it right? Is that her last? Ewing, yes, Ms. Ewing. Actually, I met with her for lunch and thanked her for all she did. Need to reach out to Ms. Abel, thank her also. And Knowles, yeah, there's so many Elizabets. So Elizabeth Knowles, that's the Elizabeth I want to thank today. She also sent me a link to Leesville Elementary School video, one of the, I believe it was the middle school, Brookville Middle School. They actually presented amendments and went through the entire amendment process. I was just really blown away how everybody embraced it and, you know, took it on as a big project, so that was fabulous. I reached out to Eddie Martin at Brookville Middle School, and this Thursday, they're also having an open house, 4:30 to 6:30, and they're calling it "The Showcase of Excellence", you know, so that the kids can show their parents what they've been working on. And Mr. Ackerman at Tomahawk, I almost said Thomas Road, Tomahawk Elementary, said their book fair was incredibly successful this year, which is always great news. And they also had two grand days that were fabulous, too, in their school. So that's all I have for tonight.
Well, ditto with the Educational Foundation. I think it's just amazing what they've done in a short period of time. And as someone, and I know there's a couple of us on the board here that live a little closer to it than some of us, but I know the hard work that goes into this, and it's just amazing that they've been able to pull off what they have in a short time.
Very appreciative of it. And as Gary, as Bobby said, I think earlier, that it's just amazing that the donors that we've got there and what they've been pulling through, you know, coming forward with. So thanks to them. And I've got a couple of recognitions here, and I want to make, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think I read that Brookville High School was voted best place to work, the Reader's Choice Award. So I think that's a great accomplishment. And also the best public school right there. So hats off to Brookville.
Mrs. White?
I don't know what you're doing, but it's good. Thank you. That's all I got.
That was good. Mr. Maddox.
I'd like to thank the town out of the visiting Friday. They allowed us to have a homecoming break. And since we can't drive on the track anymore. And most of the kids participated. The band was there, the football players, all the sports. And they came through part of town. And that was, the kids seemed to thoroughly enjoy that. And also, I attended Constitution Day, and I was amazed. The kids drew up their own constitutions of what rules they would follow and how they wanted this school to be run. And they signed it. I mean, so they were definitely, they were definitely learning something though. But I thought, of course, the little kids making little ass. But no, I think that was definitely a good day there. And that's all I got.
Mr. Grant.
I want to make sure that I don't repeat some of the things because some of the things I have here has already been said. But I do want to, I need definitely, I'll get in trouble not to echo the hard work of the Campbell County Education Association. They do a remarkable job, and I've seen it firsthand, on the work that they do hours after hours. A lot of those, all of them do. But also, apart from Brookville High School, Dr. Stanley, I understand that Dr. Stanley is good in conducting music. He's got all kinds of different hats.
He does what?
Sample?
The buzz, it'd be, maybe it was a success. Thank you, Dr. Stanley, for conducting the National Anthem to start the showcase. Is that correct? We thank you. The Brooklyn Marching Bees placed first in class four A and took the caption, "Awards in Music, Percussion, and Journal Effect," at the Lynchburg Classic this past Saturday at City Stadium. Over the last couple of weeks, the drama has had a very successful, once again, musical, The Lightning Thief, we had for two weeks in a row. And I want to thank them and the remarkable job that they do. I think you had spoken about the things going on at school at three thirty to four and also at middle school, I think. And I think, Mark, you said something about the best public high school, maybe Brookville High School. And I think a lot of this credit goes to the students and faculty and especially Mrs. White. Thank you. That's all I have.
All right. I am, I too, obviously, want to appreciate and thank the foundation. I had a nice visit with Mr. Bennett down at Brookneal Elementary School and then over at William Campbell with Mrs. Hanson. And it was a very pleasant meeting because they're truly happy now. I think the sense of sort of getting back to a sense of normalcy sort of permeated through without it really coming up as a topic. And kids are excited. It seems like the teachers are happy. And I was really pleased with our visit. And the other good news in Brookneal, because that community struggles, but that elementary school is full. And that's a, it's a problem, but it's a nice problem. And I got to visit the preschool, which is in the cafeteria. They've had to completely change their whole cafeteria system. But Mr. Bennett's done an excellent job and he's got good help down there. And I'm just real happy for Brookneal Elementary School and the Brookneal area. So things are good. That's all I have. So we need to have a closed executive session tonight. So I need a motion for that.
Mr. Chair, I move that we convene in a closed meeting for discussion or consideration of disciplinary matters or other matters that would involve the disclosure of information contained in a scholastic record concerning a student in the school division, specifically student number nineteen from 2022-23 school year in accordance with section 2.2-3711A2 of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended, and consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel in accordance with sections 2.2-3711A8 of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
We'll take a five-minute recess and then meet again for our closed session.
I put it back to where the Blacksburg.
To the best of each member's knowledge that during a closed meeting only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed or considered in the meeting by the school board.
So move.
Second.
On favor please raise your right hand. Motion carries.
We don't have anything axed.
We're good. All right, so with that, we're done, right?
Well.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Well, hold on. I got, can I, we're in open session, right?
I just want to make sure that everybody, I know the question came up earlier, I think, and you asked a question about the V S B A and the delegate assembly, and I'm the chosen delegate for this year's as vice chair. So what I've asked, and thank you, Michelle, for doing that, everybody's got a copy of the proposed legislation. And we need to, you know, most of, you know, ninety-nine percent of the time it's non-controversial, but everybody needs to take a look at it, read those proposals, and let us know. Now, the question I've got, Dr. Johnson, is if we have an issue, I see that the actual, it's a virtual meeting on November tenth. We don't have a school board. Our next school board meeting is November the thirteenth, I believe.
If you see something, all you have to do is send your written comments into Mark, and we send them.
I understand that, but do we have to say that there's some disagreement amongst us? Do we have to have any kind of?
No.
Okay.
This is not, that's not official business. And you can, you can poll each board member and do that. It's not something has to be.
Okay, that's fine. I just want to make sure that if we need to get together.
They didn't have to vote on it.
Right, okay.
But do we need to respond him individually, not maybe?
That is correct. It's individual. If you have an issue with a piece of legislation, with that proposal, you kind of do it all at once. And then Mark, yes, and then he can get that out to me and I can get that out, or you can call each individual member. Just ask how they feel now, if there's any issues.
All right. Yeah, I was just worried if we needed to get together or something, maybe reschedule or something. Okay, that's fine.
Can I pick you back on Mark? It won't keep us long. V S B A keeps re, all of, all the training I've been in recommends that we have the invite your legislators to a school in November. Do we do that?
We do.
Okay, cool.
I don't show up.
They don't show up, so.
Okay, yeah, I just want to make sure. So then we can talk to them directly about anything that we see there as well. Awesome.
Well, this is V S B positions.
Those are recommendations, correct. Right.
Yeah.
Motion adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Let's hit Sal to the smarter in the county.